Morning everyone.
Morning.
We're grateful and thankful to have this opportunity to be here. It's always great to see everyone. It's always great to see another day. We're certainly thankful for that opportunity that we've been given by grace and mercy. So with that being said, I am calling a meeting to order. And at this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Rich Wright of Trinity United Methodist Church to lead us with the invitation that we can stand and remain standing. And Councilman Bailey will lead us with the prayers.
Let us pray. Almighty gracious God of all people, thank you so much for your past blessings. And we thank you for the future blessings that you will impart upon our city. For today's important meeting, help our council to experience your divine presence and gain holy wisdom for their work. Empower them to make proper decisions that will benefit all of the citizens of our city and all of the communities. Almighty gracious God, we ask you to encourage us as citizens of this city to engage in faithful service that promotes peace and compassion. In all that we do, may we glorify you as we share your love with others as you bless our city and bless our council. And it's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Could we pray a prayer please? Kitchen, salute, prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Wright. Appreciate it, thanks. And thank you Councilman Bailey for the prayers. At this time, Council, I'd like to call on our HR directors, Beth and Chesley as well as our, oh, I'm sorry. Elijah, again, our city manager, Wallace Hunter. This is something that was started years ago by our city manager. And it's one of the greatest things we can do because we are saying sincerely thank you to people who put their time in. And we're grateful for what they do for this city and this community. So with that, Elijah, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we're proud to recognize and celebrate the dedication and commitment of our employees who reached a significant service milestone this year. To these employees, your team contributions are the foundation of our success. And we sincerely thank you for your hard work and your loyalty. So first with the police department, Captain Doug Thomas, 20 years of service. Unfortunately, he's unable to be with us today, but we'll make sure that the police department boards his certificate and P and X. Now last but not least, with the engineering public works department, this Angel Moore with 20 years of service.
Aye.
My family's with me.
That's right. Don't follow that.
The little one is Whitefeet. The older one is Olivia, and then I have the brother.
Speak, Angel. Thank you.
Y'all can read out all my names.
Whatever you gotta say. You say something, I'm playing some play along.
I think I really only attended today, which is great. But no, I mean, thank y'all to my family. I thank y'all, you know, Mr. Hunter, you know, being inside, working with us, with life, we get back, you know, we come back together. And he's taught me so much, you know, and been able to do this, know as much as I did without Mr. Hunter. You know, my children hear me every day, and my husband about, oh, my home, does that happen? So I did have two children here. I felt like a brunt of here. You know, I did start, I graduated college in 2001, started work at Luke County. So I actually have almost 24 years into their time in the system. So yes, y'all should remember that. No. But no, I do, I learned so much here. I've learned from all the departments. I feel like we're brothers and sisters, you know, we go to fight and we get stuff done together. So I really appreciate him. I love the camaraderie that we have. And you know, the council, I've been with y'all for a very long time, you know, with Mr. Hunter. So I just, I really appreciate the city, you know, it's allowed me to have a life and allowed me to have a good life. So, and I appreciate everything that y'all have done to me, Mr. Hunter, you know, we, you know, he's been through all of my milestones, you know, two parents while I was here, never do mind that. So I really do feel like I grew up here. Because I was young, maybe, to be honest with y'all in our family, but man. So, but no, and to my family, I'm so proud of y'all, that y'all can come and watch me continue to do this. So yes, thank y'all.
Thank you, Angel. Thank you so much. And that Officer Thomas know also, we appreciate him and thank him. And I know a lot of y'all heard me say this, and we'll continue to say it at some point at the correct time, the most two powerful words that you can say when it's not sincerely and wholeheartedly, and you're not looking for anything in return is thank you. So thank you, Angel, and that Officer Thomas, we appreciate it, thank him also. Thank you. Proceeding onward, it's time to cap someone. Under the city clerk, at this time, I'd like to ask the council for approval on the regular scheduled meeting minutes, and we will take these separately. Council, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the June 16, 2025 work mission.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, Councilman Bailey may have a second. Second, Councilman Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Mayor Love.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding onward, council, at this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion for the approval of the June 17, 2025 council meeting.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Green, may I have a second?
Right.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Mayor Love.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding onward, council, at this time, are there any unfinished business that council would like to discuss or think we need to discuss? Okay, good night, everybody. Proceeding onward with the resolutions and unadministration.
Hold on a second. What was you going to? Utility.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you all. At this time, it's not on the agenda, but we want to have a point of privilege to be to have some of our utilities directors come up and explain some of the situation that we're taking as far as an overhaul of where we're doing things and some of the leaks that we've had.
Okay, Mayor, council. Well, I'm actually, this is the city manager, Chan Danbrook, and John Sprague is our utility director to do today is our utility department belongs to our citizens. Our citizens need an explanation in what we're doing throughout this city with utilities and dealing with every aspect of the utility department. And that's the water filtration plant, wastewater plant, our field operations, and our administrative offices. We're going through an overhaul of our utilities from decades and decades of times that you have to do maintenance on and change it. All you hear news these days is throughout the United States is infrastructure problems that we're changing it. That's what we're dealing with, utility department, or you're dealing with the storm system, which our engineering department, if they have it. So what I want them to do is introduce them, you all, to a new team of personnel. We have to make a lot of changes culturally throughout that system and utilities. And I want our citizens there to follow what we're doing. When we plan to do this on our website, also if we make changes throughout our system. So Mr. Danbrook is going to come forward and he's going to go through some things. And I want him to have to give y'all some information on what we have to do throughout this entire city over the next five to ten years.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good break, thank you.
So thanks, Rick, for my, will be my second anniversary as the city manager here. And to say that the majority of my time with the notes until this part, we didn't understand. But it's been a great opportunity and a great project, and I'm very excited about it. I know that we often, often we get complaints about water leaks, the sanitary system overflowed with it, some wastewater treatment plant. I know that y'all get hundreds of calls, complaints about all these things. And I wanted to take the opportunity to update you on what we're doing to address all those issues. And the first thing that we had to do was, as Mr. Hunter mentioned, was change the culture of the utilities department. And to do that, there had to be some major personnel changes. Those changes have caused some bumps in the roads, pickups. It's not easy to find and replace operators and directors and superintendents. It's not easy to find quality people, not only smart, intelligent, qualified, but also votes of character. And so I believe we are on the right path. So I'm going to start by introducing these people who are now working very diligently, hard, and often long hours to improve our system. So, and John, Mr. John Sprague is our utilities director, our utilities engineer, y'all known him for a long time.
Thank you.
John is a qualified utilities engineer, a professional engineer, but is also an excellent department director. And you will not find anybody more dedication to their job and to the mission of utilities department and overall, and change and improving and looking to the future with Mr. Sprague. And I've come to know John very well over the last few years, and it's been almost a time ago. And I tell you, he's a man of integrity, and he has a vision for the department that I think this council should. Next person I'll introduce is Mrs. Elizabeth Blaine. Mrs. Blaine started a few months before I did in utilities department. She is the office manager and is in charge of the administration division of the department. Administration is billing, customer service. She also manages and supervises our meter, metering division, if you want to call it meter tech supervisor. I think we've, to say that we've had a culture change in the administration is, I think we understand. We've made almost a complete change of personnel. We've turned over every rock, opened every book, we found where the issues were in billing, the metering, and she works very tirelessly. She's a front-facing person to the moment, it's a very difficult job. As you can imagine, if you think, if you get a lot of complaints, imagine what her role is like. It's like they're respectful and courteous to all of our customers, even when they're onto her. And so we really appreciate that. Mrs. Blaine will be overseeing about the switch to a, to billing systems, that she's got a big project ahead, with our switch over to matrix billing. And I'll talk about this a little bit later, but our new metering project, our new AMI system is going to put a lot of stress on her, on her division when we go through this difficult transition from our AMR meter systems to our AMI. Next person I'd like to introduce is Mr. Norris Williams. Mr. Williams has been in the city for almost 20 years. He is our field superintendent, he's over the water distribution division, wastewater collection division. This is a tough job, as it is. They work long hours, the winter and summer, doesn't matter. Some of the things happen, go out and fix it. So he has a difficult job, as it is. Not only is the work hard, but Mr. Williams has been faced with, with really taking the brunt of a labor shortage. That labor shortage is not just a big city. That labor shortage in the utilities industry is nationwide. And it's made it very difficult for him and the city to keep up. But they do a tremendous job. They do a lot of work that goes unseen, happens in places that nobody goes. And they do the necessary work to get the water to your house and the sewage away from them. And Mr. Williams has done a great job. I'd like to also introduce JD Jackson. JD is our superintendent for our wastewater treatment plant. He started in that position towards beginning in 2024, I guess, March of last year, March of March 2024. This is another division that's had the complete overhaul of personnel. JD's done an excellent job in really refocusing the crew out there, improving morale and work ethic. And he's doing so at a time, one of the most difficult times that the wastewater treatment plant can endure. It's a complete overhaul, I mean, clear overhaul, but a very large expansion and overall wastewater treatment plant. And as y'all know, this, this expansion and project has caused some issues with AGM. And so he's been put in a very difficult position that he did not create. But he is absolutely the management job. We look in the next two weeks to get all of our processes back on the line. And we believe that once that happens, we will begin to see the unbridled discharge is going down, and hopefully eliminated completely. So we're very excited. He's a pride of the crew and, when I say current, a culture around, again, he has done that. Last but not least, I'd like to introduce our newest member, Mr. Eric Crimming. He is a superintendent for our water filtration plant. He's been with us almost a month, is that right? And again, this is a man who has voluntarily stepped into a position with a plant that is in need of a lot of, a lot of changes, a lot of difficult work, a lot of long hours. And he's called here to do that. Eric is a seasoned operator. He also has been an instructor at the Water, Wastewater Institute. He's very capable of handling, and I believe that he is going to be the person to lead our water filtration plant into the future, as we made some significant changes that I'm going to discuss here in just a minute. But as we go along, and I know, like I said, we get a lot of complaints. But I'd like for folks, I'd like for y'all, the citizens to know that we've been working very hard to change a lot of things in the utilities department. It's a very large department, it's got a lot of things to maintain, a lot of exposure towards the city. But I wouldn't be able to put a face to the name and to the resolutions and ordinances that y'all pass in here. So, and also want to thank, hopefully, all these people put in a tremendous amount of work and time on, you know, that bites in the weekends. I'm just very proud of, I'm proud of this association. So, thank you very much. And I bet I've got work to do, so I can have a good chat with you guys. Oh, yeah? It's fine.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all so much.
So, along with people, there's a lot of other things that have to be done as well in our utility system. I just wanted to take the opportunity to tell you what we have done and what we are going to do, what the scope of the work that's going on is, so that everybody can kind of get an idea of what we're dealing with, not only today, but in the next three, five, seven, 10 years down the road. As I mentioned, in the administration department, we're changing over to a matrix billing system. I think it will make our billing program much more efficient. We're also about to begin a $7.5 million AMI project. This is, if y'all are well aware, our metering issues that we've had. And we're fortunate to be able to do this project. The first base should begin third quarter, maybe fourth quarter, fourth quarter this year, the first quarter of next year. I'll replace every meter in the city, I think it's residential meter, partial meter, every bit of it. It's a project that we believe is not only going to help with the billing accuracies that we face with the machine meter stuff, but also these meters are cash machines, right? If we're not, if we're not metering and counting every drop of water, it goes out, and we're losing money. So we believe this more efficient, more accurate metering system will help on the revenue side tremendously as it moves forward. The field operations, we all heard about water leaks, right? And there are water leaks, and we know that, we can see them. But this trickle of a water leak has turned into a waterfall of death. There are water leaks, we know that. Every city has a leak, you can't, you can't avoid it. And sometimes they're in places where you can see them, and sometimes they're in places where you can't. But just over the past seven months, I counted our in-house work that our crews done, we put a billion and a half dollars into fixing water distribution systems and these water leaks. We expect to continue that that takes until we're done. Interesting thing that I'd like to mention to y'all is, we've seen this proliferation in leaks over the last two years. As we looked at that, we started to try to figure out why that might be happening. And so we started looking at maps with the leak locations, and then started looking at some underground apartments that we issued and what's going to go on there. And I'll tell you, we've had a very sharp increase in underground utilities being installed in the city over the last few years. When you take maps of water leaks and you overlay it into maps of underground utility installations such as gas, power, fire hydrant, mainly, you find a very strong correlation to water leaks, to the installation of underground utilities. I hope Bill will present something to the council pretty soon to show you graphically what that looks like. But it's astonishing what's going on. If you just do a quick search on internet, you'll see this is not one place, but that's happening, it's nationwide. And some cities that utilities have put a more fluorid on installation of underground utilities, such as fire hydrants, for this purpose, this call for. So while I'm saying all of the water leaks are due to installation of underground utilities, we believe there's a strong correlation between this. It also has, in our wastewater collection system, a lot of work to do. And we have a system that has between, some estimates are 400, but I think our aggregate number is closer to 600 miles of underground sewage. And these vary in age and height, and sometimes are very difficult to form. The biggest problem we have with our wastewater collection system is just called II, which is inflow, infiltration, as wastewater gets into our wastewater system, overloads it and causes leaks and bubbles out of manholes, or it overloads our wastewater treatment plant and causes a bit of disheveling. As part of the AGM settlement that will be forthcoming, we're going to be required to fix this problem. And this is a major, major project. So far, we've completed estimates for engineering repair of basin number one, there are three basins, basically. And basin number one is the oldest portion of Bean City. And our initial estimates to repair basin one is 4.5 billion dollars. That's one. This is not going to be an option, it's going to be required. We're going to have to address this issue very soon. Now, this is also not a project that's going to be completed in a year. This is a five to 10-year project to fix these problems in the wastewater collection system. We've got the wastewater treatment plant, which I mentioned briefly. We've heard a lot about it, of course, you know about the AM issues. But like I said, hopefully, within two weeks, we'll be back online with our expansion to 7.75 billion dollars per day and the upgrades to our clarifiers. The project belongs to 15 billion dollars. And while we've expanded the capacity of the plant, we've addressed issues with clarifiers, but this plant, more than any of the others, is like a living baby. And it needs repair and replacement, knees, hips, shoulders, sometimes go out. And so while we have to spend 15 billion dollars there, we look to spend additional two to three million over the next several years for improvements in our streaming process as to prevent things like mics from getting into the, into the system. And we're also going to have to address some issues of our managers. That may in the next few years, and like I said, I believe that could be 7 billion dollars at the plant. The water filtration plant is the last stop hitting the utilities department of what we're doing. I believe this is the most critical part of the infrastructure in our city, right? The ability for us to provide very clean, quality, high-quality water is essential. And not only do we provide it to the citizens of Bean City, but we also provide it to other jurisdictions who are incapable of producing more. We provide water to Russell County, we provide water to Fort Mitchell, and they rely on us to supply certain portions of their drinking water. So we've started an assessment, and y'all have read the resolutions, you passed them over the past four to five months. And we've got some major projects that are coming down, like on this, this what's called SCADA system. And that's really the brains of the plant. And SCADA supervises our control and data acquisition, but it's the pilot. And it helps the operators know how much water is in the tank, how much chemical is being fed into filter, how, what filter levels are. It opens and closes valves. It does a myriad of things that I can really begin to understand. But it's a very complicated system. Hours was last updated, I believe, in those seven. And so it's time to take control of that and get a, get us into the 21st century. With SCADA, we expect that project will be in 3 billion dollars. We're working right now on the assessment. And we'll have some hard numbers by the fall as to what that's going to be. We're also switching some of our chemical processes. We're going to be switching from soda ash to lime. And we also want to be switching from fluorid gas to hydrochloric acid. Those are both safety concerns, safety issues, as to why we didn't have plants in the neighborhood. We need to make sure that not only our plant operators are in the safest environment that we can, we can give them, and make sure that our neighbors are safe as well. So we'll be looking at those processes, switching those over. And there's many other things that are going to need to be fixed. But the last thing with water filtration plant, we discussed this previously, is PFAS and PFAS. And these are the forever chemicals. The EPA set limits as to how much PFAS, PFAS can be in our water. We're under, again, under stress to address these issues, the PFAS, PFAS issue. Luckily, we're in a fairly good situation. We have water that has We have water that has relatively low levels of PFAS and PFAS to begin with, and so we think that we're going to be in a better position than some of the folks, more of us to deal with this. Even at that initial estimate, depending on what type of system we go with, there's somewhere in the 30 million dollars. So, PFAS, 30 million, all the other things I mentioned to you, approximately 22 billion dollars. And that's, that's part of the capital cost that, that we can expect to, to pay within the next five, 10 years. But the good thing is, we've got our eyes on, on all these issues, all these problems. I mean, we're ahead of the game on getting these processes in place before they come to a point of failure, but it is something that I think the council and citizens should be aware of. This stuff takes continued, continued maintenance, upgrading, and repair, and I just want to, maybe we're still aware of that, answer any questions, someone might have about it, but let you know that the utilities department is working very hard, most of their technical and all five people in charge, and we're in a very positive position as of the future. Unless you have any questions about, of course, the council.
Well, you just talked about the amount, the cost of the project that, that threw that into the plant. You're going to be going in base, a base of different bases.
Well, yeah, even if we had all the money sitting here, right in front of us, on this podium, so these are long-term projects, which the engineering alone for some of these things can take a year, as, as we put boots on the ground, so yes, this is going to be the many phases over a long period.
Well, let me ask you another question. I noticed on 20, 20th Avenue, I, I, I noticed they repaired, she was repairing, they repaired the leak, they're in that leak, kind of something saying, they repaired water in the leak and put it back there. They have ready to repair, make a couple weeks sit back, and they start again and look again. So, what are they going to do, they go back and repair that again?
Yes, sir.
And when you go back to do that again, you don't have to pay for that?
Well, if, if, if our group is willing to repair it, and the repair fails, we go back out and repair ourselves. Let's say it's repair the contractor, that repair would be on the board, and so the contractor made that repair, and there it stands, my question.
One other question. Do you think that somebody in our streets, I noticed many people came around to those streets that, that people would travel around some of those streets, just a bit like 20th Avenue and 7th Street. I notice eighteen, but I seen them myself. Are they supposed to travel those type of residential street?
Just a question, are any team we were supposed to travel those residential streets? Well, I believe there's regulations, as far as trucks can, 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 I guess, are really, it's, it's a, it's a bad service.
Okay. I mean, that's a question, but I see it much, so can you run that way? And will it, will it change the world?
Right. So, I have another question.
I do have one too. I just want to say to Mr. Campbell and the utilities department, and first of all, congratulate the team that would be leading these projects. It is so needed, and we all know that we have an aging city, our infrastructure is in dire need, as many other places are aged, and, and cities our size. Specifically, you said about 4.5 billion in the oldest part of the city. And once again, is that the center part of the city?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
It is, yeah. And I, I say that, and I ask, because as we ride and we hear from our constituents, me and these, and I know they hear a lot about the infrastructure issue, but that's something, I'm glad you brought this up, because it's some information that we can take to our citizens, constituents, and say, you know, bear with us, we have an aging city, and there's going to be some new projects that's coming. And I just recently heard of one, and I'm so glad that we, we're always, I, I know the team is analyzing what needs to be done and how soon it needs to be done, and we'll get to it as soon as we can. And that's what I have witnessed as serving on council, and I just want to say thank you to that department and Mr. Hunter team for having the, you know, analyzing the scope of the project and, you know, making sure that those are taken care of as soon as possible. But I'm, I'm glad to hear that the, the second district is going to, you know, benefit a lot from this new project. It is, you know, we, we hear it all the time. But I'm, I'm glad, you know, those water reports that we're getting all day, I think that helps. You know, a lot of people ask about, you know, the quality of the water, and when we talk about those different types of chemicals that's going in the water, we have one of the cleanest water reports that I've seen, and I, you know, go to, you know, meetings up in Montgomery, and I hear about limestone counting these days, and our county and our city is not near where that water report, report lies. So, thank you, especially, I want to say thank you for having the, the, the need to go out and seek these new projects, because it's so, so needed in our aging community. Thank you.
I want to say something. Well, I did, I did want to take this opportunity, while we were, when we started the water filtration plant project, as I mentioned, there was major personnel changes that, that were required, something very difficult to do, and that was scheduling and permitting purposes. And I, I'd like to thank the Plumb Water Works, they, they came and lived us in operators along the way, and we've also had some suspension water for that helped, and light water. And those guys came in at a very crucial time and provided a very deep service. We're through that phase now, I believe, but, but I did want to thank, thank those folks for their hard work, their dedication to our community, to our region, and, and, like you said.
That also gave us a chance to make the regional operation and the company that we built with other teams and other water systems, but also a part of what we talked about yesterday, Angel Moore is in charge of our grant team. And we've, as you all know, we've been very successful, John Swack, that checks appeared not too long, I told you about her, her grant, 5.7 million dollars. She informed us, got spared another $2 million. So, the numbers that you all are hearing, they're big numbers, but we plan to attack that aggressively through our grant system and how successful we've been in that, to help along with what we have to deal with, the fire hazard system thing for now, so. So, we got high hopes on that being a big part of this. I think we, I think we will continually be successful in that.
Let me address something real quick, make a two thing real quick. I agree really over outside contractors that come in, probably half the phone calls I get about someone complaining about a water leak, one year, two years, three years, eleven weeks in town. Mr. Bailey started right after they put in the, the gas, Mr. Bailey started right after the fiber optic, right after the pile come from 50 years. Very rapid, you could say, Mr. Bailey, right after y'all worked on something, the street mind started leaking. Most of the time, and it's all getting on the same side, the roadway went down. Also, I get a lot of people caught back, and I don't know how to address it, you don't know, you hate to have to repair it yourself, but a lot of this time, these subcontractors come in and do stuff they're allowed to do in our city. They don't put everything back the way it should be put back, they leave it gravelled and I know the same, we just want to call this all the time, where the gas people left it gravelled, left the pile of dirt, didn't load it back out along the road, run over the top of it anymore. And we didn't, we allowed it, but we didn't do it. But it's just hard enough people, if you're around to do the work, much less if there's somebody behind everybody, babysitting everybody, to make sure that they put it back the way it should be, but yet it falls on our shoulders, and you don't have, have any idea, I mean, homeowners or property owners, just go out there on their own with a wheelbarrow and a regular shovel and just addressing themselves, and it's easier for me to do it now than it is to wait three weeks or four weeks for the city to get down here and do it, or call and complain about it. Others wouldn't do it if it was piled up, you know, the driveway, they drive around and they park on the street and step over. I mean, you did, you got all kinds of people living in the city. But I don't know how and where we can address that without having somebody that every time they finish a job, you have to go out and look at every spot that they done up, rather than just, you know, assuming that they're putting it back, so. A lot of that is what you're, what you're saying is exactly right.
Yes, sir, and, and you know, these, these companies, spot our AT&T, and, I mean, there's a myriad of our companies out there, you know, those companies are subcontractors from Texas, Utah, I don't think, North Carolina, they come in and they're, I mean, they're bored.
They do it, they go.
And they're gone. And I, we're, like I said, we're working on a project to definitely correlate that and to figure out a way perhaps to, to recoup some of the expenses.
I was going to say, maybe they need to put up like some line money or something to help shine, you know, for just these type of things, that when you have to hire another company to come in and straight down, what you didn't do when you left. It's a lot of that's big, it's like it does when you rent somewhere on vacation, you know, they, they take your credit card money and take the room rate, but you still got a little credit card late night, you bust the lamp or bust a refrigerator, or whatever, you know, that's still on you.
All, all the companies that, that are installing underground utilities have franchise agreements with the city, so we do receive franchise fees from, from these companies. There are identification provisions within that, and, and there are certain bonds that are, are.
And that's what I was going to say, it's how, how hard are they making to collect, though? You have your money put up front for the pile, so to speak, and we give you incentive to make sure that this stuff is done correctly, where you can get your money back.
Well, we're, we're, I think we're moving for the enforcement period.
There you go.
As long as, it, it can be.
So, how long will you keep taking all the punches?
That's, that's right. And I, I'd like to, to perhaps discuss that in the executive session in the future, but we're certainly looking at how, how we do that.
Well, we also have been talking about what you're talking about, they have anger at some of our contractors bringing them back, and they had to make up the cleanup work for them as we catch them, they have to do that, they go there, of course.
That photo, where that board is straight, there's stormwater.
Well, you know, but, I mean, you know they have, they, they got subcontracted, it's the second, or third, or fourth generation down the line, just doing the work. They don't know how far back it's gotten, hopefully they get caught doing something.
Yeah. Well, that's not a percent, that's a percent.
Well, let me ask you just, oh, another question. Did you present just, just my words, very good, very, sorry, that definition will be on your website, sort of, citizen information particularly?
We, we would like to put an overview of the schedule of the work that's being done about utilities department, we certainly would like us to have that make a note to the citizens, so.
Okay. Thank you. Chan, I do want to say this, is, this has been very informative, and the perfect, and thank you, Senator Manager and Councilmember Green for reminding me, I had read down that, overlooked it, but however, I do want to say that this was done for the reason where we can show to our citizens that these people are doing everything they can, and these people are people of this community that works for the city, and they're doing everything they can, and I hope that everyone was note that they're doing all they can, and as you mentioned, they have water leaks, they know about them, they prioritize them, and it's not going unnoticed. But I will tell you, anytime you have to build a new culture, which my hats off to the city manager and his team for doing that, it's, it's not easy. So, I just appreciate you all having the courage to be, to be transparent, as we always speak of this council, to let our citizens know, so, you know, let's not beat up on each other, let's not beat up on them, let's not beat up saying that we don't care. What has taken place this morning shows how transparent we are and how much we do care, because they are getting the problem head on. I know that the leak hasn't been reduced, but I know each, sometimes when they are reduced, a bubble pops up, so it seems that, oh, nothing is taking place, but I, I do want to commend you all, Senator Manager, for, for having the courage to let the citizens know that we've done everything we can, and the people have done everything they can, so just let's try to get a little encouragement, too, and, but, and thank you, Chan, for, for that, and again, it's an opportunity for us to show how transparent we are, and we certainly thank, thank the city manager for that. Okay?
Counsel.
Thank you all for proceeding on at this time, and thank you all for keeping me accountable. Now, counsel, at this time, are there any, any business that any council member would like to discuss? If not, we'll get into the resolutions and our administration. We have an administration here for the verification of business license for Smiles and Files Repair. And at this time, I would like to open this up and call for administrative hearing, if there's anyone that would like to step forward to discuss this hearing, now's the time to do so. Mr. Brumford?
Yes. I'm looking for both of my license.
Could you speak up?
Yes. I'm looking for both of my license.
Okay.
So, I have some appliances in this point, but I've been there looking for the latest ten, or more years, and the latest three years, I've had various severe damage issues going on, people seem to drop a lot of stuff off, sometimes you got a thing, all the time you got a thing, and I try to recall as soon as that was beginning, but now, damage issues I'm doing as always, my mom paid for the latest, so, so now I do two more times a season now, to get it resolved, out of full signs now, so you're not dropping your appliances off after certain hours, so.
Well, I'm so sorry to hear about your mom, and I mean, you'll, you'll take care of your mom, but I have read that, I think, most of the accounts I have now, it's been going back since 2016, and the regulatory, from wrong, situation, and that coming out and working with you and all of that, so, it's.
It's been a long time, my mom, for the last three years, three, four years, and, you know, people start dropping stuff off, sometimes it comes to shop three, four days, you know, get ready to, look, so, try to get this to came, it'll be resolved, I've got a good hand, you know, out of the signs and stuff, but I've been doing appliances off.
Okay. Mr. Carlson?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, we've developed a deal with Mr. Brumford, he's in a situation for about a part of 10 years. It basically averages out about every six months, he has a period of presence given to him for the same conditions. In the, in the situation, at the same time, he's got the responsibility as a business in the city to use property clean and defend the borders, and the guy that flies that we have, he's had more than adequate opportunities to do this, he's had several citations written for the same condition. He's also got one in, that, that was on July 10th, I'm not saying, for officers' law, you know, for the citation for the same problem, and this, we, all the time, he's got the citation for this. It's, it's continuing on, it's something called zero, through the city, it's a public nuisance, and, and that's the reason we're pretending to, 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 officials, though, I think he's had a long enough time to try to resolve this issue, this recent, city workers of time, resources that we've got, we use, that was what's, so that's what he's doing.
And again, we are showing sympathy for you in the, the loss of your mom, but again, as he stated, and as I stated before, as looking at it, it's, it's been ongoing probably since 2016.
Can you live on 2016?
Yes, sir, and I correct.
Yes, sir, part of the fair first, we wrote, it was last one night, 2016. When you live on 2016?
Yes, sir. And I correct.
Yes, sir. Paris, Derek first wrote, uh, his last one, I, 2016.
And it's been, I thought it was six times. Did you say it? Four times? What citation?
Uh, one, two, three, four.
Five times? I thought I said it. Okay. So.
There's lots of time. You can cut down and get the citations regardless of that regard. You know, trying to make it to you and stuff. It's not so many more times. You have this, you have, you have to drop. I think about twenty years if you drop this off, but first I need to get home. You still drop this stuff off. But at first I, you know, what I'm saying is, uh, I mean, maybe you might still want to make yourself, write stuff to me and stuff. I mean, we're good to see it. I mean, you know, you know, you want to get it to you all at the same time, which I said later, we never get it for you. So, you know, by that sense, you know.
And may I ask you another question, please?
Yes, sir.
At the time that you were issued the citation, did you ever correct that situation based on the citation then issued?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Corrected, they play it after. Rather than the rate. You can regulate to drop it off, not to be. You can correct.
What's your prevailing dropping and all that? I mean, we've been doing it all those years. If it's clean enough, it's gonna do it. You can't bring that twenty miles of that stuff that they're waiting for.
And there are full signs. There are full signs. I don't know what's happening. You know, it says call and tell them to do that. It's the, you know, some numbers.
Well, even that, even though you do that, you still can't keep them from dropping stuff off. And if you drop it off, it's gonna do the same thing as we do in the past. It's gonna collect. Before you even got enough help to move it or if you have enough time to move it. It sounds to me like you've just got some people that help you too much. Is what it sounds like. They bring you too much stuff. They have too much, which is not helping you. It's actually hurting you. Uh, but there's no way or we can prevent it. You can't stop them. And, uh, in the past, if you had disposed of the stuff quickly, that because of time or because of, you know, the ability to do it, you can only do so much. Uh, you still will be in that same position for them. So that's, that's kind of what the city is looking at, I'm sure.
And not only that, you know, we, we, we have the responsibility to make sure everything by law and ordinance, which is one of the same, we have the responsibility to enforce those. They have the responsibility to do that. And one of the things that I can say wholeheartedly, we have been consistent, and when I say consistent, this council, as well as these workers. And we take great pride in that. So, uh, again, you know, it, it's just hard for me to believe 2016 has been probably, we've been issued five. I thought it was six. So, you know, I did go to school way west, so sometime I don't have it right. But nevertheless, uh, it, it just appears that, uh, nine years and it's still been going on. It just, it just doesn't look right. Okay? It, it just doesn't, being honest, it just doesn't look right.
Well, let me ask you this, sir. Uh, when did you raise your signs and the weapons where you cannot drop that stuff?
About a, about a month ago.
About a month ago. But during that time, you had a lot of stuff running your business.
Yeah. It was, any time you get outside, it's nothing, stuff around there. You know, I got, I got one around here, rather than that. You can use stuff on a regular basis. I don't contact you with delay at once. So you don't go in personally after you can drop this stuff off. Okay?
Well, it appears, it, it looks, like I said, it just doesn't look good because it appears one would have to think. And I have to say, you know, in me reading and looking at everything, I, I have to be honest to say, maybe think that once you received those citations, you would get it right at that time. And then it occurs again. And it's, that's just not a pretty picture from my standpoint. So, uh, again. Yes, sir.
I'll ask you something, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
I also want, from that, so we're here to help you. The primary are also making contact with Mr. Brunnich about his property. The code requires us, on the code of international name property, we give a notice. It's required that you give at least three days notice and even though more than thirty, as I give, we're usually fishing. So every single time he was issued a citation, I observed violation. He was issued a notice. I'll be back in seven days. I'll be back in five days, wherever I get them. And then when I return, it's still in violation. That's when he gives the citation. And this is how long it goes. That happens, I leave my own, I can get that four day. It becomes court. Judge always asks me to see pictures. Judge hears how I would date a citation. He sets it out for review. He's supposed to approach it in our attorney. What happens most of the time is on the day of the review, Mr. Brunnich has to come back. It's plain with us. I grew up there the day before. The judge didn't want to see pictures. Front of the plane, backside of the plane, take pictures. He's sounding guilty fine. We all do all of our own lives, but we can't go a week or two in our office without getting somebody to drive in and report that to the court. So I'm forced to be interesting. I'm forced to.
Yeah.
And what's happened to this point is just isn't working. He's just, it's a cycle. Which is why I'm right here. That's all.
I'm okay with it. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Brunnich, you would like to add or take away?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let me ask, um, favor, um, my condolences to you and your family on the loss of your loved one. When you receive the items, I know you appear some of them, what do you do with the ones you can't appear?
I think just drop, you know, some could drop off when you repair. Some I'll repair myself.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to say? Anything else from Brunnich?
The only other thing I was mentioning, like, like, where, is that the fire department, I'm not prepared for surveying the private insurance inside the business of hot permanent design here. So that's, uh, just another item that doesn't suit well for the business of, you know, how far it's, so it's not like the proper work or the test. The workers will pay for such ones. It's not, so.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, uh, I'll let you continue. I think the location is impossible. Uh, I don't, I'm a little cold. It's not ability.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to locate, I would like to leave. I have that on. So if I have any, like, you know, change, please, sir.
Okay.
See you.
Question, definite, uh, the relegation.
Well, there's just certain things with it. Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you all so much. Is there anyone else that would like to come and address council as far as this administrative hearing?
Let me say one thing. Jim, Eric, what Officer Smallwood said is correct. I go home that way every evening. And he was correct when I go by there. About the last two or three weeks, it's been clean as whistle. Nothing in front, no trail in front, no nothing in front. Every other time before that is continuously, and I couldn't tell what's the same stuff sitting down in front of us. Ten other different items, uh, the hallways, five, six, eight, ten, twelve items sit on the front porch. Porch after fifty, can you walk down the front porch used to be stores when I was a kid? Uh, very few of those things are rented out now. Some of them are, maybe they are, maybe, but some of them are not an open business. But, uh, and around back, I've seen some of the stuff around back. I love it. People that live down there call me up and ask me just to ride down there and look at it. So, you know, they, that kind of truth. And I understand where you're coming from, but, uh, we're not in business to go around picking on businesses. Uh, but we are in business to, and we do send the city employees out and ask them to make, make that careful. Please, they care, you know, please. Everybody's a catcher. Everybody's gotta follow the same rules and regulations. And it's only fair that, you know, we back there looking to enforce the stuff, which should be enforced. It's just that, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brunnich.
Thank you.
Again, if, if there's anyone that would like to come and address council as far as this administrative hearing, we still have time if you would like to. If not, I am closing this administration hearing. With that, proceeding on, council, we have resolution in reference to the revocation of business license for Smiley's Supplies Repair. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City has received a violation report on Smiley's Supplies Repair, a business in the City of Phoenix City. And whereas the City of Phoenix City has a procedure for revocation of business license under City Ordinance Section forty-six dash two per for businesses that are in violation of any ordinance of the municipality or any statute of state, of the state relating to the business for which such licenses are issued. And whereas, after giving the licensee or applicant an opportunity at this administrative hearing to address council on this the first day of July, twenty twenty-five, on the issues of revoking a business license, the City Council finds the business Smiley's Supplies Repair and its owner, Curtis Brunnich, to be in violation of city ordinances and or state statutes. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby revoke the twenty twenty-five City of Phoenix City Business License of Smiley's Supplies Repair at twenty-two, twelve, Fourth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama. Curtis Brunnich, owner, pass approval and adopt it this first day of July, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Counsel, we've heard the resolution at this time. I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please. Do they have a motion?
What's your rule?
All right. We have a motion from councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, councilman. They would agree with. We have the motion. We have the second. Any comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, council, we have resolution in reference to acceptance of the proposed settlement in a claim against Sierra Pacific Industries in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas on July ninth, twenty twenty-three, a contractor struck a order ban while working on property on West Sierra Pacific Industries, wherein the estimated damages suffered by the city are approximately thirty-two thousand dollars. And whereas the parties have reached an agreement to settle all claims of the City of Phoenix City against Sierra Pacific Industries in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And whereas, City Council of Alabama, that it is in the best interest of the city to settle this claim in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby settle and approve of the proposed settlement regarding the city's claim against Sierra Pacific Industries in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and does further authorize the mayor and city manager to execute a settlement agreement and release on behalf of the city. Pass approval and adopt it this first day of July, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Counsel, we've heard the resolution at this time. I'd like to ask this council for a motion.
Motion.
All right. Motion, Councilmember Green, second, Councilman Day. Do you have that, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Comments or discussion? All right. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green. Yes. Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, on administration, as a resolution in reference to issuing a certificate or a license to Eddie N. Low for the office of mayor, but such term pursuant to the provision of section eleven, forty-six, twenty-five as amended. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended, provide for a regulating, a regulating general and special elections in cities and towns of this state, except those cities and towns which have a commission form of government. And whereas section eleven dash forty-six dash forty-three of Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five prohibits right-hand candidates in elections held under sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended. And whereas section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended, provides that if only one person has filed a statement of candidacy or has been nominated for an office for an election to be held pursuant to sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended at the time the deadline for qualification has passed, then such person shall, for all purposes, be deemed elected to such office. And the mayor or other chief executive officer shall not cause the name of such person or the office for which his candidacy was declared to be printed on the ballot, but he shall immediately file a written statement with the government body of the municipality, attested by the clerk, certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy or was nominated for the office preceding the deadline set for an election of municipal officers of the municipality and settling for the name of such person. And whereas said section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six as amended, provides that the government body of the municipality, after receiving such statement, shall adopt a resolution declaring the person named in the statement duly elected to the, to the office described in the statement and shall issue a certificate of election to such person. And whereas the mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has filed a written statement with the government body of the municipality, attested by the clerk, certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy for the office of mayor prior to the deadline and that name of the person who filed such statement was Eddie N. Low. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that Eddie N. Low be, and he is hereby declared duly elected to the office of mayor in the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, for the term of office commencing on the first Monday of November, twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved that the mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, be and is hereby directed to issue a certificate of election to Eddie N. Low for the office of mayor for such term pursuant to the provisions of section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-five as amended. Pass approval and adopt it this first day of July, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis, council. We have all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion.
Have a motion from councilman Day. May I have a second?
Thank you.
Second, Councilman Day. Okay. At this time, I'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Mayor.
I'm abstaining. Abstaining. Abstaining.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Proceeding on, at this time, we have resolution in reference to issuing a certificate of the license denied Steve Bailey for the office of councilmember District One for such term pursuant to the provision of section eleven, forty-six, twenty-five as amended. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended, provide for the regulating general and special elections in cities and towns of this state, except those cities and towns which have a commission form of government. And whereas section eleven dash forty-six dash forty-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five prohibits right-hand candidates in elections held under sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended. And whereas section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended, provides that if only one person has filed a statement of candidacy or has been nominated for an office for an election to be held pursuant to sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended at the time the deadline for qualification has passed, then such person shall, for all purposes, be deemed elected to such office. And the mayor or other chief executive officer shall not cause the name of such person or the office for which his candidacy was declared to be printed on the ballot, but he shall immediately file a written statement with the government body of the municipality, attested by the clerk, certifying the fact that only one person has filed a statement of candidacy or was nominated for the office preceding the deadline set for an election of municipal officers of the municipality and settling for the name of such person. And whereas said section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six as amended, provides that the government body of the municipality, after receiving such statement, shall adopt a resolution declaring the person named in the statement duly elected to the office described in the statement and shall issue a certificate of election to such person. And whereas the mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has filed a written statement with the government body of the municipality, attested by the clerk, certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy for the office of councilmember District One prior to the deadline and that name of the person who filed such statement was Donald Speed Bailey. Now therefore be it resolved by the. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Penning City, Alabama, that Donald Steve Bailey be and he is hereby declared duly elected to the office of councilmember District One in the City of Penning City, Alabama, for the term of office commencing on the first Monday of November twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved that the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, be and he is hereby directed to issue a certificate of election to Donald Steve Bailey for the office of councilmember District One for such term pursuant to the provisions of section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-five as amended. Passed approval and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard a resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilman Day. They have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Green. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Abstaining.
Mayor Laugn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Proceeding on again, council. On administration, we have a resolution in reference to issuing a certificate of election to Steve Pace for the office of school board member District One, place one for such term pursuant to the provision of section eleven forty-six twenty-five as amended. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended provide for and regulate general and special elections in cities and towns of this state, except those cities and towns which have a commission form of government. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash forty-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five prohibits right-hand candidates in elections held under sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended provides that if only one person has filed a statement of candidacy or has been nominated for an office for an election to be held pursuant to sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended at the time the deadline for qualification has passed, then such person shall, for all purposes, be deemed elected to such office and the mayor or other chief executive officer shall not cause the name of such person or the office for which his candidacy was declared to be printed on the ballot, but he shall immediately file a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested by the clerk certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy or was nominated for the office preceding the deadline set for an election of school board members of the municipality and setting forth the name of such person. And whereas, said section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six as amended provides that the government body of the municipality, after receiving such statement, shall adopt a resolution declaring the person named in the statement duly elected to the office described in the statement and shall issue a certificate of election to such person. And whereas, the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, has filed a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested by the clerk certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy for the office of school board member District One, place one, prior to the deadline and that name of the person who filed such statement was Steve Pace. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Penning City, Alabama, that Steve Pace be and he is hereby declared duly elected to the office of school board member District One, place one, in the City of Penning City, Alabama, for the term of office commencing on the first Monday of November twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved that the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, be and he hereby is directed to issue a certificate of election to Steve Pace for the office of school board member District One, place one, for such term pursuant to the provisions of section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-five as amended. Passed approval and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've all heard a resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilman Green. They have a second. Second, councilman Day. Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Mayor Laugn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Proceeding on, council. Saying we need to take a break. We need to break for some water.
I'm gonna drink some water.
Proceeding on, we have a resolution in reference to issuing a certificate of election to Jonathan Taylor for the office of school board member District One, place two, for such term pursuant to the provision of section eleven forty-six twenty-five as amended. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended provide for and regulate general and special elections in cities and towns of this state, except those cities and towns which have a commission form of government. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash forty-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five prohibits right-hand candidates in elections held under sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended provides that if only one person has filed a statement of candidacy or has been nominated for an office for an election to be held pursuant to sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended at the time the deadline for qualification has passed, then such person shall, for all purposes, be deemed elected to such office and the mayor or other chief executive officer shall not cause the name of such person or the office for which his candidacy was declared to be printed on the ballot, but he shall immediately file a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested by the clerk certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy or was nominated for the office preceding the deadlines set for an election of school board members of the municipality and setting setting forth the name of such person. And whereas, said section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six as amended provides that the government body of the municipality, after receiving such statement, shall adopt a resolution declaring the person named in the statement duly elected to the office described in the statement and shall issue a certificate of election to such person. And whereas, the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, has filed a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested by the clerk certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy for the office of school board member District One, place two, prior to the deadline and that name of the person who filed such statement was Jonathan Taylor. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Penning City, Alabama, that Jonathan Taylor be and he is hereby declared duly elected to the office of school board member District One, place two, in the City of Penning City, Alabama, for the term of office commencing on the first Monday of November twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved that the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, be and he hereby is directed to issue a certificate of election to Jonathan Taylor for the office of school board member District One, place two, for such term pursuant to the provisions of section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-five as amended. Passed approval and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard a resolution. This time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from councilman Day. They have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Day. Okay, call for a vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Mayor Laugn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, there's a resolution in reference to issuing a certificate of election to James Patrick, James Elliot Patrick of the office of school board member District Two, place one for such term pursuant to the provision of section eleven forty-six twenty-five as amended. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended provide for and regulate general and special elections in cities and towns of this state, except those cities and towns which have a commission form of government. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash forty-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five prohibits right-hand candidates in elections held under sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended provides that if only one person has filed a statement of candidacy or has been nominated for an office for an election to be held pursuant to sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended at the time the deadline for qualification has passed, then such person shall, for all purposes, be deemed elected to such office and the mayor or other chief executive officer shall not cause the name of such person or the office for which his candidacy was declared to be printed on the ballot, but he shall immediately file a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested by the clerk certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy or was nominated for an office preceding the deadline set for an election of school board members of the municipality and setting forth the name of such person. And whereas, sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six as amended provides that the government body of the municipality, after receiving such statement, shall adopt a resolution declaring the person named in the statement duly elected to the office described in the statement and shall issue a certificate of election to such person. And whereas, the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, has filed a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested by the clerk certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy for the office of school board member District Two, place one, prior to the deadline and that name of the person who filed such statement was James Elliot Patrick. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Penning City, Alabama, that James Elliot Patrick be and he is hereby declared duly elected to the office of school board member District Two, place one, in the City of Penning City, Alabama, for the term of office commencing on the first Monday of November twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved that the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, be and he hereby is directed to issue a certificate of election to James Elliot Patrick for the office of school board member District Two, place one, for such term pursuant to the provisions of sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-five as amended. Passed approval and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Okay, still good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, council, we've heard a resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilman Day. They have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Day. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Mayor Laugn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council. On administration, there's a resolution in reference to issuing a certificate of election to Katrina Collier Long for the office of school board member District Three, place one for such term pursuant to the provision of section eleven forty-six twenty-five as amended. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended provide for and regulate general and special elections in cities and towns of this state, except those cities and towns which have a commission form of government. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash forty-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five prohibits right-hand candidates in elections held under sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended provides that if only one person has filed a statement of candidacy or has been nominated for an office for an election to be held pursuant to the sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended at the time the deadline for qualification has passed, then such person shall, for all purposes, be deemed elected to such office and the mayor or other chief executive officer shall not cause the name of such person or the office for which his candidacy was declared to be printed on the ballot, but he shall immediately file a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested by the clerk certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy or was nominated for the office preceding the deadline set for an election of school board members of the municipality and setting forth the name of such person. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six as amended provides that the government body of the municipality, after receiving such statement, shall adopt a resolution declaring the person named in the statement duly elected to the office described in the statement and shall issue a certificate of election to such person. And whereas, the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, has filed a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested by the clerk certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy for the office of school board member District Three, place one, prior to the deadline and that the name of the person who filed such statement was Katrina Collier Long. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Penning City, Alabama, that Katrina Collier Long be and she is hereby declared duly elected to the office of school board member District Three, place one, in the City of Penning City, Alabama, for the term of office commencing on the first Monday of November twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved that the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, be and he hereby is directed to issue a certificate of election to Katrina Collier Long for the office of school board member District Three, place one, for such term pursuant to the provisions of sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-five as amended. Passed approval and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis, so very much. Council, we've all heard a resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilman Green. They have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Day. Okay, call for a vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Mayor Laugn.
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, council, we have a resolution in reference to issuing a certificate of election to Yolanda Daniel for the office of school board member District Three, place two, for such term pursuant to the provision of section eleven forty-six twenty-five as amended. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended provide for and regulate general and special elections in cities and towns of this state, except those cities and towns which have a commission form of government. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash forty-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five prohibits right-hand candidates in elections held under sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended. And whereas, section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended provides that if only one person has filed a statement of candidacy or has been nominated for an office for an election to be held pursuant to sections eleven dash forty-six dash twenty through eleven dash forty-six dash seventy-three of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended at the time the deadline for qualification has passed, then such person shall, for all purposes, be deemed elected to such office and the mayor or other chief executive officer shall not cause the name of such person or the office for which his candidacy was declared to be printed on the ballot, but he shall immediately file a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested by the clerk certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy or was nominated for the office preceding the deadline set for an election of school board members of the municipality and setting forth the name of such person. And whereas, said section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-six as amended provides that the government body of the municipality, after receiving such statement, shall adopt a resolution declaring the person named in the statement duly elected to the office described in the statement and shall issue a certificate of election to such person. And whereas, the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, has filed a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested by the clerk certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy for the office of school board member District Three, place two, prior to the deadline and that name of the person who filed such statement was Yolanda Daniel. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Penning City, Alabama, that Yolanda Daniel be and she is hereby declared duly elected to the office of school board member District Three, place two, in the City of Penning City, Alabama, for the term of office commencing on the first Monday of November twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved that the mayor of the City of Penning City, Alabama, be and he hereby is directed to issue a certificate of election to Yolanda Daniel for the office of school board member District Three, place two, for such term pursuant to the provisions of section eleven dash forty-six dash twenty-five as amended. Passed approval and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Council, we've heard a resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilman Green. That will motion. Councilmember Green, may I have a second? Second, council today. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, council, moving on, on the building department. We have a resolution and public notice in reference to setting public hearing dates and fixing demolition costs associated with the property located at one thousand four North Railroad Street. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city council of the city of Fanning City, Alabama, has been informed by the building official of the city that a substandard structure located at one thousand four North Railroad Street, Fanning City, Alabama, was in need of demolition or removal. And whereas the city of Fanning City, Alabama, has submitted sealed bids as required by Alabama law, and the apparent low bidder meeting the specifications required for the demolition of the substandard structure was all season long here, the bid ended up in fees being eighteen thousand dollars, and the demolition and final inspection being completed on the sixteenth day of May twenty twenty-five. And whereas the city is required by law to get a notice by certified or registered mail to the person last assessed or after more taxes before the final fixing of cost, and a copy of the resolution is to be published in the Citizen of East Alabama, a newspaper of local and general publication in Russell County, Alabama. And whereas the building official of the city of Fanning City, Alabama, was authorized to proceed with the demolition and or removal of the substandard structure with the apparent low bidder at the approved bid price. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fanning City, Alabama, as follows. One, that the city clerk gets noticed by certified registered mail to the person last assessed for after more taxes, and a copy of this resolution be published in the Citizen of East Alabama newspaper, one time before the final fixing of cost and establishment of a special assessment upon the property as required by law. Two, that the date for fixing of cost before the city council shall be August fifth, twenty twenty-five, at nine o'clock eight a.m. in the council chambers. Three, that at such public hearing, any person interested in this property, as well as the person last assessed for after more taxes, should appear and give reason, if any, while the city council should not establish a special assessment upon the property for the cost of the demolition or removal of the substandard structure, which the owner of the property had either failed or refused to do after it had become a public danger or health hazard. Four, the sum of eighteen thousand dollars shall be levied against the property located at one thousand four North Railroad Street, Fanning City, Alabama, as a special assessment, and shall constitute a lien against the property to be collected through the revenue commissioner's office for Russell County, Alabama. The council notes that the parcel identification number of said property is zero five dash zero one dash eleven dash three dash three zero two dash one zero two point zero zero zero. Number five, that the property owners, as shown on the tax records of Russell County, Alabama, is Runham Home Rentals and Senior Care LLC, sixty-three oh one Garrett Road, Midland, Georgia, three one eight two zero. Passed and approved? This passed, approved and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. This time I would like to ask the council for a motion, please. We have a motion from council today, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, council today. Comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, on the building department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to accept change order number one with Ben Boyd Construction Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars for renovations to the Fanning City Information Technology Building located at twelve eleven seventh Avenue. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Fanning City, Alabama, in resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-eight dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five contracted services of Ben Boyd Construction Company, Inc., to renovate the existing building at twelve eleven seventh Avenue into the Fanning City Information Technology Building in an amount of one million six hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. And whereas it has been determined that a change order is deemed necessary, more specifically as follows. Change order number one. Item: Abey three layers of floor tile containing asbestos, first and second floor of an entire building. Addition thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Total amount of change order number one, thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Whereas such a change order would result in a contractual adjustment of an additional thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and causing the contractual amount to be one million seven hundred three thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Fanning City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept change order number one contract documents with Ben Boyd Construction Company, Inc., for the above referenced project. Pass approved and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution which council we've all heard. This time I would like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, council. Number Green, second. Councilman Bailey. Okay. We have the motion, we have the second. Comments or discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, could you get somebody to help me with this, Fanning City, you realize this is the item, and the reason why it costs so much? Does it really?
I'm just curious, too. How do you pick up on the asbestos? I mean, sometimes, I guess, you can see it, but this was, I guess, made in the tile. The tile was made out of asbestos.
If the age of the tile, I don't know. It's a process that, you know, asbestos is used. They have to attach, sometimes it's a chain. But yes, sir, that's always behind it because of the amount of the asbestos in its white.
So when you found out that was an investment?
Investment, yeah. You check the tiles. Yes. The tiles, and checking, showing that it is asbestos. And so they have to make it to get properly, and it's white. It's why I think in the entry process, that's the reason it costs.
And really, cost of investment?
It takes certain company, if they're there, you have to be certified that, yes, sir.
I just want to say, just to understand that.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And there's three layers of it, so that's why it has to be, so that's, no, no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it. We have a comments or discussion? Not at this time, I would like to call for a vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, on the building department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to accept a proposal from Neil Ken Dust and Murray P.C. Architects professional service for preliminary design and construction plans additions to the municipal building in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Fanning City plans to construct an addition to the municipal building. And whereas professional architect services are required for the preliminary design and construction plans of the addition. And whereas Neil Ken Dust and Murray P.C. Architects have submitted a proposal for professional architect services for the project in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Fanning City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept a proposal from Neil Ken Dust and Murray P.C. Architects for preliminary design and construction plans for additions to the municipal building in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Pass approved and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of that resolution which council we've heard the resolution, and it's time I would like to ask the council for a motion, please. May I have a motion, council?
Motion to approve.
That's a motion. The council today, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, council. Number three. Okay. Comments or discussion? Not. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council, the parks and recreational department. Resolution in reference to a one-time compensation of five hundred dollars to the Fanning City Youth Baseball seven U, eight U, and nine U All-Star Teams entering into the twenty twenty-five U S S A World Series in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city council of the city of Fanning City, Alabama, decides to serve the residents by supporting recreational services. And whereas the city council of the city of Fanning City, Alabama, would like to recognize accomplishments of the Fanning City Youth Baseball seven U, eight U, and nine U All-Star Teams. And whereas the Fanning City Youth Baseball Teams swept through their region and were crowned Alabama State Champions. And whereas the Fanning City Youth Baseball All-Star Teams were awarded a fur in the twenty twenty-five U S S A World Series in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Fanning City, Alabama, wishes to make a one-time compensation of five hundred dollars provided funds are available to the Fanning City Youth Baseball seven U, eight U, and nine U All-Star Teams to defray costs associated with the advancement to the twenty twenty-five U S S A World Series. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Fanning City, Alabama, does congratulate the Fanning City Youth Baseball All-Stars on their successful season and best wishes in the World Series in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Pass approved and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. May I ask for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, council today, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, council member Green. Comments or discussion?
Yes, I know. We are very proud of, uh, she is representing city in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and we are very proud of. At least, uh, everybody knows Fanning City, I love it. Athletes come out and say, oh, Fanning City, not only baseball, but all, uh, sports as well, basketball, football as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Davis?
I take care.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Green. At this time, council, I would like to call for a vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, utilities department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to hire Southern Rewinding, Inc., for the repair and installation of the water pump at the Brandon Wine Pump Station in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand one hundred dollars. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Fanning City Utilities Department operates a water distribution system which supplies water to the Fanning City and Russell County. And whereas the Brandon Wine Pump Station currently has two water pumps operating and a third pump which was taken out of service to inspect due to severe leak. And whereas if one of the two currently operating pumps were to fail, the Utilities Department may not be able to provide an adequate amount of water to Fanning City and Russell County in the area served by the Brandon Wine Pump Station. And whereas Southern Rewinding, Inc., has inspected said leaking pump and submitted a proposal for the repair and installation of said pump in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand one hundred dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Fanning City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to hire Southern Rewinding, Inc., for the repair and installation of a water pump at the Brandon Wine Pump Station in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand one hundred dollars. Pass approved and adopted this first day of July twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. It's time, may I ask for a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion, council today, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, council today. Comments or discussion? Okay. Not, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, council, on the ordinance. We have a public hearing, second reading. It's an ordinance to rezonate five point zero nine plus minus acres of land located at two twenty-two Martin Luther King Junior Parkway from North Ridge Zone, high density residential district to the C four zone, Hollywood Commercial District, Bob White Investment LLC. Mr. Owner, we had the first reading, council, on the twentieth of this year. I am not going to ask the clerk to re-read it, so with that said, now at this time, I would like to open it up for a public hearing. And if there's anyone that would like to come and step forward in reference to this rezoning, now is the time to do so. Since no one has stepped forward, I am calling this public hearing closed, and at this time, council, I would like to call for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve it.
All right. We have a motion. Councilmember Green, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, council today. Excuse me, council today. So we have a motion, may I have a second? Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, council, on the public hearing, and second reading, we have an ordinance to rezonate five point one six plus minus acres of land located on the like a road in New Sun Drive on A one zone, low density residential in general active culture district, Genarch Zone, medium density residential district, D E H Old, LLC. Mr. Owner, also, council, this first reading was on the twentieth of May. I'm not going to ask the clerk to re-read it, however, I am now preparing this as an open public hearing, and if there's anyone that would like to come to address the council in reference to this rezoning, now is the time to do so. Since no one has stepped forward, I am now closing this public hearing, and now, council, I would like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, council today, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, council member Green. All right. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And also, council, on the second reading, we have an ordinance to amend section one point zero four four one and one point zero four four three of the various system rules and regulations of the city of Fanning City, Alabama. Council, the first reading, it was seventeen of June. I'm not going to ask the council to, excuse me, clerk, to re-read this, however, at this time, I would like to call for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, council today, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, council today. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, council. Now, at this time, I would like to call my attorney, Mr. Jerry Grant.
Good morning, Mayor Council.
Morning.
We have two claims on the agenda. Uh, first line, uh, Joe Walton. Once Mr. Walton, they filed this claim, the Assistant City Manager, Trina Daniels, they're trying to contact him to give permission to come on this property to investigate the claim and do basically, I do diligence, well, he wouldn't respond to emails, telephone calls, uh, any sort of information, and put it on the agenda to, uh, tonight because it's like cooperation, but what he did was finally got in touch, and they are now working with him, and he is working with us, and, uh, we need time to investigate the claim, uh, see if it's just problem or a serious problem, and we're going to need to take this until the second reading in office where we can come back and do a re-recognition.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Council, we've heard the recommendation. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to take.
Motion to take.
I have a motion. Council today, may I have a second?
No, second, yes.
Second, council member Green. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a second claim, it's filed by Alvin Insurance for Wendy Vernon Home, and We had denied this claim earlier because there were blackest one estimate for banks to recall. They had come back and, and added two more estimates, uh, the lowest being three thousand three seventy-six eighty-six, D United, and Oliver for me. Uh, my recommendation would be to, uh, prove that claim about a man.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, again. Council, we've heard our attorney, Mr. Graham and Davis. At this time, may I ask for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion, Councilman Day, second, Councilmember Green. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, hi. I'm going to pray this, Mr. Graham.
Sure, sure.
Um, what we're talking about, culture changes, it's moving with the partners. And I, I feel, I guess I didn't say that when Mr. Hammond appointed the City Manager, he started the process by selecting department managers that changed the culture for this city, every department. Uh, and if you'll remember, um, and I'm not saying her alcohol all that department had to do a great job, but Angel was appointed as, uh, City Engineer and then later Public Works Director. Wallace can tell you, when I, when I was on the council for nine years, the, uh, Engineering Department and the Public Works Department was a place. We tried everything, we could never get the right person, uh, for those positions. Uh, I think the, uh, employee theft in Public Works was at an all-time high. Uh, we had fire people, women, Miss Ward, she changed culture in the Engineering Department at Public Works and we don't have to worry about those stigma from us anymore. Yes. I want to thank Mr. Graham.
Well, you had time to change culture, you have to make a tough decision. And, uh...
Well, they did, though. Nick, you're in the home of the white, you know. She was playing house, thank you, man. Well, you did a good job.
That has to happen. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Thank you all so much. Uh, before we turn, Councilor, anything for the Audit? Why, turn over to Mr. Hammond.
I'd just like to say, coming up on the Fourth of July, remember where we live? In Phoebe City and Alabama, United States of America, we're in a great country, in a great city, good people. But there's still a lot of evil in this world, awful lot of evil. Firefighters just not alone. I know what I think I saw in the news where it was two that were killed and others that was injured, and then just straight up assassinations, if there was no, no other reason for. Politicians are being killed and shot different places, not just in Israel, not just in Gaza, not just in Key, not just in Iran, right here in the United States. We gotta watch out for each other, we gotta be more diligent, but we have got to start loving each other, caring about each other, people gotta start minding each other. And I know it's easy to say that, and sometimes it's hard to practice, but when you think that, it's always lying. Thing like times will objectify a lot easier. But I'm sure there was probably just as much maintenance and just as much cruelty in the world at that time when I was growing up as there is now, it just wasn't known immediately and people couldn't try to compete, do it. I think that's the problem we get into, people won't compete. Uh, when person does something that affects five, somebody else wants to affect ten. Well, I guess that's a good theory, you're doing good things, so try to do the good things. Let somebody affect five people the right way, then maybe somebody affect ten people the right way. And let's bring unity back together, bring caring back together, and start sharing, uh, the good things that we have. This country has come a long, long way, uh, always without a way to go, people are always gonna be changing continuously. But we live, we live in the best country in the world, live in the most powerful country in the world, we live in a country that seems to care about the whole entire world. So since we live in the country that cares about everybody else outside this world, let's start caring about each other within, within this country. And just remember to celebrate the Fourth of July, to celebrate the sacred.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
I got one comment, and I'll be brief, and, and I won't ramble, I promise. Um, congratulations again to the utility new team. Um, it is so well I know deserved, and so, again, just congratulations, and we look forward to working with you all, uh, on all of your initiatives, and, uh, we want to see those profits come to fruition because our city not only deserve it, but we've been waiting for something like that for some time, since I've been living in Phoebe City and been knowing what's what. And congratulations to Ms. Angel and the officer, two people, forty years, um, and that speaks volume about the caring and commitment that they have to our city. And, uh, we were so proud to have you as part of that, that teams that look out for, for the citizen here in Phoebe City. So congratulations to you, uh, you two. And, uh, we've had seven resolutions today, um, awarded certificates of election. Councilmember Bailey, uh, congratulations. It's been a pleasure serving with you and, uh, hope to continue to serve with you. And, um, you've reached the mound somehow, I don't know how many of the years you've been serving, but we thank you for your service and, and, uh, look forward to, um, you know, working continuously with you. Um, you know, I had a chance to witness the mayor and, uh, his team, uh, with the mayor's, uh, scholarship, uh, about twelfth year. And so, in looking at that, it is, it, it, it tells me that our mayor is someone that cares about people, and he cares about educating people and providing the necessary tools to get it there. And so I just want to say personally, Mayor, congratulations. Um, and, and the reason why I say I know he care about people is because, um, twenty twenty-four, I spent approximately almost two months in the hospital. And this man called me, I can count on one hand how many people outside of my family called me and asked me how I was doing. And this mayor, he was one of them. And that's why I say I know he care about people. And so we need somebody like that in our leadership role in our city. And you, you, if you had an opponent, you would have had my vote, uh, because I know that you care about people, and that's what we need. We need leadership like that. You have persevered through, um, milestones, and again, I just want to say congratulations, and continue the great work that you continue to do, and make our city one of the best place to be and worship and attend school and work. It means so, so much to me to, to say that.
Thank you so much.
And, um, congratulations to all the other ones that received the certificate of election without having an opponent. But, um, as we move forward, we know that we got the right person and the persons in place, uh, to lead our city. And so, um, to my constituents, uh, and I'm not making a campaign speech or anything, but I just want to say it takes people like what have already been approved as a certificate of election to care about our city and to put forth the work that it takes to grow our city. And so, congratulations to those, and the school board members, I know that you, I hope and pray that you will continue to know that our children come first and all that we do. Um, and I know you'll continue to do great things. There's a couple on there I know that will, um, have been re-elected, and I know that they'll continue to be great, uh, for our school system. So with that being said, I would just want to say congratulations to all.
Thank you.
I would, I'll say this, Mayor, I, this is what has been said already, I can't remember what has been said already, to be, to Mr. Big, you got it. Uh, that's what I'm gonna take, as you've been saying in the, uh, prayer this morning, it take love, it take love and it carries for people to, for us to come together. And I often say this when I have the opportunity, you guys are, I go, I always say this, that Jesus said that help us, um, and he was all about love. I say this in Sunday School, I say, one of the greatest men who walked on earth, but he was all about love. And that's the devil that we must follow. And we realize that, uh, I say this in Sunday School, we are, we don't profess it, we, we got afraid all the time, because, I'm not gonna say that, say anything against you, ma'am, but everyone's had this with it, but bottom, even there, it's on Seventh Street, now, everyone that heard right there, we have so much pressure, and it really, really bothers me, like, if we're done it up right, 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 on Seventh Street, you know. I like to say to the citizens of Phoebe City, if you are this whole city, I say this last time, this is your city, let us try to keep it clean, let us start to go fresh outside these one, the top of tears, let's keep our city clean. And, and now my hat's off to you, I had to offer to attend the, uh, Mayor charity ball as well, and I said to, uh, some folks, I had some folks from Compton, and I said to them, I said, I said, uh, she's cool, I mean, this is a great mayor. I said, nobody, I think you do such a great job, such a great job. And I often say that, I say, yeah, I'm a great man, I always say that, that's the mayor. And then I say this, uh, and I'm quiet, I say this yesterday that I brought Mr. Hunt, as I look at all these, all these dollar bills, that, all these different parts, I asked Mr. Hunt, I said, where is money coming from? He said, I'm in Jefferson, and stuff like that. And then I said, check, commence planning to do that and conserve it, and he gonna take that, I have to get it, that's all I have to say, ma'am, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond?
Okay, thank you, thank you, ma'am. Like I say, the resolution, everybody just doing something, we helped this city. Um, I'll say this, uh, we've put some focus, a lot of focus on how these two people walk in this morning because it needs that, and that's where a lot of complaints are coming from, you know, we, we've been, we have people getting confused sometimes, we had, uh, this past week, I don't say this on here, we, you know, Mayor, you know, we had a thread on the light this week, and I don't take that light now. And, um, you know, people get confused and they get mad about a lot of things, and, um, we had to have police officers open, uh, and unlock it, you know, and that interferes with the workers and it makes them frightened. And these are public buildings, saying, obviously, say this, when you're in public buildings and you, you know, that's, it belongs to the citizens, but at the same time, it's provisions we have, gonna have to put in place more restrictive to make our personnel feel safer. Because when you have people, what's happened lately, and, and I guess I would prefer it that way because I don't want our workers to get hurt, what happened lately throughout the nation is people come to your house to get you, you know, and that threat was made too. And, you know, it's just certain things you have to do to protect yourself and, and your family, but you don't want to be involved in. You want things to be, uh, for happy, we had angels in that curve yesterday, so it's getting kind of, kind of tough with, um, people, you know, police officers up on third floor, and we had more or less, we moved somebody yesterday, you know, it's getting too close for conflict times. But at the same time, our public buildings, um, it's gonna take a lot more security. Now, we have this wave of defense that's going on, you know, this morning I looked and I seen firefighters, you know, and that was my profession for a long time, and, um, it was sad to see, it was very sad, sad to see that. Also, you know, I mean, you know how to say, anywhere, you know, and trying to do a, a job, the type of jobs that you ask, you know, that you ask God for, you know, things that you want to serve, I've always wanted to serve, you know, since I was six years old. So I've been fortunate to do a lot as a person of what I've asked my parents to allow me to do and what God made available for me to do because that's my belief, you know, and everybody can believe in what they believe in. But as far as this city and the teams that we've been able to build over the years, like, um, Mr. Graham and Mr., um, Steve Bell, they say a lot of the time, and like I say, they, they've been around to see a lot of stuff that was directly involved with the city. And with the addition, I've been fortunate for a lifetime because even as City Manager out there, they continuously be blessed through God to add people to the team that was good for the team, that's been good, a lot of people that has come in. I love workaholics. So when you get workaholics, that's very smart, to add, to help this city throughout, and we have tremendous amount of work, we have a blessing, we have a combination of a city that's not only achieving things, but we're growing, it continues to be growing, our infrastructure is growing, new things being put on top of other things, and sometimes you have to watch it though, and I, you know, you so focused, we have some departments struggling and some departments that trying to, you know, trying to bounce back because we have a wave of people, the work field, the work world's not what it was when, a while back, you know, and you're trying to simplify things that's really complex. And you have, uh, this, this city, I'm sure you're gonna say this, this city operates off a very few batteries. A lot of people carry a lot more emotion than other people, and that, that's not just working, that's in caring about things, that's in having their families adopted inside of their profession, that they know this is what they, they're parent, and when you marry that spouse, you got to understand what, what you're staying for, you know? Boyfriends, girlfriends, nothing other than matter one, you got to understand when you dedicate yourself to something, you know, and when you, when you live a full career like I have here, you know, it's, and, and you look into the future, the vision, when you talk about this today, when we look at things, when we look at those things, you got to look far beyond what it's gonna do for the city, not just immediate, but what it's gonna carry through for other people, you know? During my career, I, I, I had persons that cared too much and worried too much, and people had to fend for themselves. Yeah, but I, I, I'm not that kind of person. I want to see people do better and achieve more from the day that I leave here going forward, you know, 'cause I have to be the kid for me, you know, I was once, you know, when I came here, I was a young man, and I wasn't, you know, wasn't married or anything. And, you know, and for those of you all who know Chief Gary Crayton, the things that I do now, I was able to go across, I mean, counsel me and learn through someone, and I was brand new in the fire service, you know, after the first year they was gonna provide cross-training, the police department and fire, I'll say Mark Anthony, not too long ago, we talked about that. But what he's done, what he did for me was this, I'll never forget, I'll, I'll be finishing many, in my career, I was, I was young, yeah, I had good people, I had old boys back then, you know, I was a good, still a good athlete, the whole works. So he had gotten together with his class, and I said, um, and he told me, said, well, why, what you doing hard? I said, well, um, chief, I said, when I get off, you know, I'm going on, I still work for K Watch, I always work two jobs. I said, one more job, I'm gonna get off, you know, play a little ball, I'm gonna be and I'm gonna have a good time, you know, I got a nice date, wait on, you know? You know, things gonna be just great and wonderful, going dancing and the whole works. He said, well, I don't know what kind of music they play in Long, Georgia, but we got gas class, we're gonna be going on up there, and, and that's when you're gonna be dancing there. Come March, the chief come off, he said, no, no, he say, you was off. He said, we going up there, we saying two days, and that's when, and that man, I can say, drug me around until the day he left here. And I'll say this, on this city, I have access to this property themselves to adapt it, that's been a long time ago. And that, that's why I say about people, try to put you in positions to understand what you're doing and how you care, and it's, and it's tough when you change the culture. It's tough around here, but they doing any choices and things they have to do and what's been done here before. Like I say, it wasn't worth, well, with fire department, we been through it, and it takes a lot, but right now, what I was trying to tell people, when you have something that, uh, a weak link, you have to gather together to make sure that it's done well, it's done right, and people participate in it to help one another. And that's what we got to do in our city right now, because a lot of things are taking care of itself. Now, we don't have some of the same problem with our stormwater system. It's aging, and as people build on top of it, it's, it's falling under certain pressures too. But right now, everybody should gather together and support and try to help our utilities department come up to the level where we want, because it takes a lot, and takes a whole lot, and support the people that's there, working with them to get us where we can have, so our city can be, uh, a better place in the city. You know, even, like I say, I've been through some rough times, and I will say this, one thing Sonny Cooper said, and they say a lot of things, he was mayor four times, for, he was here for a long time, and he forgot his council person also before then in eighty-six, uh, under Mr. Jamie Gillette. And I, and I tell you, and I know all of these people, I know him, Herb Bailey, I thank God for my memory, I thank God for my perspicacity and understanding and believing and thankful, but one thing he said years ago, and, and, and that man could come down on, now, he could come down on you one way or another, he just come out of the blue, but at the same time, he was politician, a true politician. He had acknowledged at one time, he said, well, all the things I've done and, and putting foot on the net sometime, he said, you're gonna smooth operate this, and that's all I ever wanted from a person, and, and he said that in front of some people, that, that's what we are always fighting for, striving for, to make sure we have a smooth transition day to day to make it through this. When, when y'all was at the, uh... When, when y'all was at the, a lot of people at the meeting following the night, John was there, dressed up as his department. We had two major breaks in this city. We had worked ourselves out all night, you know, going to different places with. And I was like, and with. So you don't, this is twenty-four second. This is, this is no other time, there's nobody, when you sitting in this seat, that you can point the finger to and say it's on them. The responsibility and accountability is in that city manager's office. So it's not always saying cool by y'all to people to get things to be well addressed. But I can say this, and I give this council credit, you know. I've had made a lot with councils that didn't just play with politics with the city. Y'all have done an outstanding job in helping us do the jobs we supposed to do professionally. If it, if there's any other kind of way, we wouldn't be as successful as y'all. Would be nowhere without that, without that understanding, you know. And I wanna thank you all right for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. I just wanna say this really quickly, wrap it up. You know, at the end of the day, it's all about people. Um, at the end of the day, it's about people, how you feel people love. And as leaders of this community, we have to have sacrificial spirit, a sacrificial leadership spirit, which is thinking about people more than we do ourselves. And as Mr. Bailey's saying, and Mr. Hunter talking about it, there's so much evil things out there. People are just going off of things. But what I wanna challenge all of us, even the people that are watching, let's learn how not to be. We don't wanna be that way. We wanna be a special, significant community, a special, significant people in this community that gives and let people love and not harm people and show love. Because at the end of the day, it's all about people. And if we're not putting people first, we're not worthy to hold any title of any position because it's about people. Thank you all so much for partnering, and thank you. It's council Shannon, we appreciate you, West Tung and Zima and all of them for keeping me straight. And I thank this council for keeping me accountable because if we're not here accountable, we're getting worse. So I thank you all so much, we care about you, we love you all, we love this community, we love the people in this community. And so let's always remember that it's about people. We do wanna thank C T B being and bringing this. And thank you all so much, and at this time, we do stand adjourned. Thank you.